Hello, welcome to our September council meeting. It's 7:05 and meeting is called to order. We did have an executive session. Scott, you want to?
Yes, prior to tonight's meeting, the council, excuse me, Borough Council, met an executive session to discuss police personnel issues as well as CBA negotiations.
Okay. This past month, there have been some really tragic events that have occurred in the United States, so I would like to have a moment of silence for Charlie Charles Howard. If anybody doesn't know who he is, he worked down at the island all the time and he worked with Little League. So he was elderly, but very sad that he has left us. The children of the mass shootings at Annunciation Church and School of Minneapolis in Minnesota, another horrendous event, and the Evergreen High School in Denver, as well as Charlie Kirk and Irina Zerutskaya, who was the poor woman who was stabbed on the subway in North Carolina. So if everyone would please just stand.
Present.
Present. Present.
Here.
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 Present.
Here.
Scott Holbert, on behalf of Flagler and Associates.
Just an announcement, on Thursday, October 2nd, there's going to be a special meeting to hire a police officer. This should help free up the motor carrier officer so that he can go down there. Right now, we have eight full-time officers and having an extra officer will free him up and he can then do trucks. Fire Prevention Week, open house is on Tuesday, October 7th, 2025, from 6:30 to 8:30, and that will be at the firehouse, so everyone is welcome. Solid Waste and Recycling Collection and Disposal Services, the contract will be opening this Thursday, right? September 18th, 11:00 a.m. at Borough Hall, and everyone is welcome if they wanted to see the... And it will also be televised. So we have paved a lot of our streets, but unfortunately, there are other issues that have happened, like residents who have used some pavers to do streets and they have left some of the paved streets in bad condition. What is it that they were?
Information.
No, when they were doing the digging in, when their hose were digging in, they left holes in our newly paved streets. This happened on Palmer and Wright Avenue. So if the residents notice anything in front of their homes, please let the borough know so that we could go after the people who did the damage and make them redo our streets. The smoke shop ordinance that we voted to just last month is going to the county and the planning commission, and so then hopefully we can approve it at our October meeting. And so then I think the firemen are here? Yes. Great. So the firemen have something to say? Is it just you? Okay, because I have two people on... Okay. So just...
Okay. Good evening, council and residents of Morrisville. I'm John Weiss, Fire Chief of the Morrisville Fire Company. Council had asked for an overview of our fire company and our perspective on the fire inspection program.
Could you just talk into the...
Sure. Sorry.
That's all right.
Fire company overview, starting with our apparatus. Our fleet includes an engine company for fire suppression, a rescue truck for both fire suppression and rescue operations, two water crafts for marine rescues, a special service truck for fire ground support, and two SUVs for our chief officers. The Morrisville Fire Company is 100% volunteer. No one is paid. Our volunteers are highly trained in firefighting, vehicle and technical rescues, swift water rescue, emergency medical services, hazardous materials operations, and more. We respond to an average of 500 calls annually, ranging from motor vehicle accidents to marine rescues to structure fires and more. In addition to emergency responses, our members dedicate time to maintain equipment, training, attend meetings, organize fundraisers, fire prevention education, participating in community events, and more. This requires significant personal sacrifice with no compensation. As far as the impacts of the fire inspection program, the fire inspection program implemented by council has significantly reduced the strain on our volunteers for which we are all grateful. It proactively identifies and resolves unsafe conditions, enhancing the safety of both residents and firefighters. The fire inspector assigned to Morrisville, Brian Folk, brings nearly 40 years of experience and works closely with us to stay informed on current conditions. His diligence and experience are vital to ensuring a safe environment. The key improvements brought forth with the fire inspection program include a reduction in unsafe conditions, timely maintenance of emergency contact information, allowing quicker property management response, the Knox Box program, which enables faster emergency access and reduces property damage and volunteer on-scene time, and fewer false alarms, reducing unnecessary call volumes for our volunteers. In conclusion, the fire inspection program is effectively reducing the burden on our volunteers and improving community safety. This is something we can all appreciate. And again, thank you, council and residents of Morrisville for your continued support. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions?
No questions, but just thank you guys for what you do out there.
Thank you.
Okay. Next will be the Cloverleaf Property Sketch Plan. So for those of you who don't know, there's a property called the Cloverleaf Property. It's down by the Morrisville Cemetery, and it's been standing vacant since the diner was taken down. There used to be a Cloverleaf Diner, hence the name Cloverleaf Property. So these gentlemen are here to give us a presentation on that piece of land.
Yes, thank you. My name is Mike McGinnis. I'm an attorney with Begley, Carlin, and Mandio. Here on behalf of the developer, I have with me to my left, P.T. Dionne, who is with the developer, and handing out a packet of information is Anad Bot, who is with Arna Engineering, and he is the site engineer for this project. As was just stated, we are here to have a, hopefully, just open conversation, thank you, and dialogue with Borough Council about what we are hoping to achieve with this site and our proposed development. We all recognize that this is a very important property in the borough, and rather than just submitting a development plan, we wanted to come before council, have a conversation about our vision, have P.T. explain sort of his company's history with this site and what he's looking to accomplish and deliver to the borough, and then have Mr. Bot give a high-level overview of what the engineering would look like with this design. I think in dialogue with Jeff Darwak from the RDA, he's been with the RDA for approximately 20 years at this point, and I know he's indicated that this was one of the very first projects that he's been involved with. So this property and what to do with this property has been of critical importance, we know, to the borough and to the county as a whole for quite a long time. We are looking to develop this site to build a nice, high-end, 55-plus residential for-sale community. This would have a mixture of townhomes and condominiums. Anad will go over in a second in greater detail what the site plan would look like, but again, these would be for-sale, high-end, not-for-rent apartments, they're condominiums that we're proposing. We would have a homeowners association that we would draft the associated documents for. We would work with Mr. Holbert in his office, of course, to review those documentations, and they would be supplied and they would be recorded in conjunction with any development plan which was approved for this site. We are very optimistic and we think if you look through the pictures and our vision for the site, that we believe that this could be done correctly, which we intend to do here, a capstone development for the borough. The site is very unique. There is a long history of environmental issues which plague the site, and we are fully committed to remediate this property to Act II standards so that cleanup is achieved throughout the entire parcel as part of our development. We also are convinced that this development would assist with improving some of the stormwater issues that we know plague the borough in this particular area. So as part of the development process, when we submit our development plans, we have to make sure that we are mitigating fully any additional runoff which would be generated as part of the development. That is going to be obviously Anad's task first as part of the design, then he's going to be working with Kurt and his team, and then because of the scale of this development, this is going to require permitting as well through the county, so the county conservation district is also going to be reviewing to make sure that we're able to achieve that before there's ever a shovel that's put in the ground for this development. We have also engaged with a very, very capable traffic engineer. We believe we can assist with some off-site traffic improvements, and we're also going to work with the county and the borough regarding the existing parking lot where we have emergency access, which is proposed. But again, at this point, obviously, this is preliminary. We do have site design that we're going to walk through with you in a moment, but we just wanted to introduce this to you because we are absolutely convinced that this is a great project for the site. We are convinced that there is sufficient demand for the development that we are going to propose for this property. We think that what we are proposing is going to result in a much higher end and better use at the end of the day than anything else that could potentially be developed at this property. And we believe, and again, we hope, that this would bring about a positive development in the borough, which would increase the borough's tax base without encumbering the school district because of the 55-plus component. So I'd like to turn this over briefly to Mr. Dionne, who's with me to my left, and then I'll have Anad do a walkthrough of what we've distributed to council, and then we'd be happy to answer any questions that you have. And again, we're not asking for a vote, but we absolutely welcome feedback so that we can make any appropriate tweaks before we move forward with the next step in the process. So thank you for your time and consideration this evening.
Thanks, Mike. Thank you, everybody. Good evening. So the reason we hired Mike is because I don't really have to say much more after that discussion. So myself and our family, we've been a part of Lower Bucks in the community for over 100 years. We've had a lot of successful projects in Bucks County, doing cleanup projects, doing commercial buildings, residential buildings, and we feel like we're putting together the team where we could really work hand-in-hand with Morrisville Borough and come up with a successful project, especially with all the stuff going down at U.S. Steel Point, U.S. Steel Property, and then working its way up towards Route 1. We feel like it could, our project could really benefit the borough, and we're looking forward to hearing some feedback from the group. Thank you.
Hi. Good evening, board members. My name is Anad Bot. I'm with Arna Engineering. I'm glad to be part of this project, which is taking over the landfill property and creating a nice neighborhood for the community. The existing property, the first page of the pamphlet which we have provided to you is an existing aerial condition, which shows the property in red, approximately 13.6 acres, and which includes the landfill property, which is further inside, and there's a small narrow access to South Pennsylvania Avenue. That's a small 0.7 acre parcel. There are single-family detached and attached, single-family detached, attached, and multifamily are the uses which are permitted on this property. Property is located in the town, the borough's Riverview Neighborhood District, which is related to the Riverview, River is on the east side of the page or the right side of the page, and there are, again, there are certain requirements for the Riverview Neighborhood which needs to be met. This site will fit in a peripheral area neighborhood, Riverview Neighborhood requirements. Total minimum 10 acres is required, where we do have 13.6 acres, very unique site. Portion of the site does include the parking area to the East Cleveland Avenue and also includes some of the wooded area next to the Morrisville Treatment Facility to the east. The, as I said, it's a very narrow access from South Pennsylvania Avenue, which we will convert into a small internal street, and I'll go through what the proposed conditions are going to be. There are, again, there's no, as you can see, there's no existing stormwater management on the site. As Mr. McGinnis has suggested, there is stormwater issues which we will have to address and we will comply, we will need to comply with all the requirements for the borough as well as DEP on a state level. We will, certainly will have to meet with the Act II requirements for the site to construct these residential units. These... So if I can switch to the next page. What this shows is the color rendering of the sketch plan which we have prepared. The attached units or the townhouses are located to the, towards South Pennsylvania, towards the western portion of the site, and the condominium or multifamily unit building is located to the west side of the property towards the, towards the river. We are proposing, this plan shows 78 dwelling, 42, I'm sorry, 46 of which are attached to the townhouses, and 32 of them are multifamily. The requirement for the Riverview Neighborhood is there's a certain composition we need to comply with. We cannot have more than 60% of the unit be more than townhouses or no more than 45% of the unit can be multifamily. We have kind of hit a very sweet spot with 59% of attached units and 41% of multifamily. That complies the requirement. The maximum density is eight acres, eight units per acre. We are proposing 5.7 units per acre. As you can see, there are several locations where we could have expanded. However, we understand that there is a need for stormwater management, so there are, although it's not designed yet, we are proposing few, more than few stormwater facilities on this property to ensure that we are addressing all the requirements for the borough as well as the DEP. We, all the internal streets are going to be 28 feet wide with parking on one side of the street. The attached unit will take access from the internal street with one-car garage and one-car driveway. The multifamily unit building is to the right side or the east side of the building, and there is a parking area behind it to address the parking needs for the multifamily. Total of 156 parking spaces are required, whereas there are total of 173, I'm sorry, 72 parking spaces proposed for, as shown on the plan. We're still under, significantly under the impervious coverage requirement of 70%. We are only 34%, and as well as the building coverage is also less than half of what is permitted. What this plan does is it provides a good buffer along the residences, along South Pennsylvania Avenue, Bowling Green Avenue to the south, and East Cleveland Avenue to the north. And we also have a recreational area which is connected to the Manor Park South, which will have a trail and a passive recreation on that area. It's more of an extension of the Manor Park and connection to the neighborhood. The neighborhood will also have sidewalks, which is a pedestrian connectivity connecting all the neighbors from the South Pennsylvania Avenue going all the way to Manor Park. Approximately, as you can see, beyond the, within the property, beyond the parking area and the stormwater facilities, there is a large area, wooded area, which is going to be left untouched. We are going to maintain approximately five acres of open space on this plan. Out of 13.6 acres is pretty good chunk of area which is being preserved as an open space. As I mentioned, stormwater management is going to be something which we are going to look at very closely, and we'll make sure that we address all the concerns which are, or the requirements which are for the borough and the DEP. And I think there are two amendments which we are seeking from the zoning amendments for this plan. One is the length of the multifamily building. The multifamily building maximum length is permitted is 120 feet, which is a very narrow, very short building for a multifamily building. For age-qualified community, when you're proposing that smaller buildings, two smaller buildings versus one larger building would make better sense with larger amenity and more centralized access for all the members or residents rather than having a two separate buildings. So we are proposing a 210 linear feet of building rather than 120, which is the maximum permitted. That is one of the amendments. The second amendment is related to the curb cuts and the garages, which are proposed on the internal street side. The requirement says that we are only allowed 10% of those units to have frontages on the street rather than on the unit. So since this street is an internal street created just for this neighborhood, we believe that this is, this is a, this is not the, the vision was if we were to be fronting all South Pennsylvania Avenue, it makes sense to have the alley in the back, so there's no, nobody, no garages in the front. But this being an internal street, it's not visible from the South Pennsylvania Avenue, and it makes to have the garages in the front. So those are the two amendments we would need. But other than that, I think this plan complies with most of the bulk requirements, and we will certainly work with Mr. Shorter's office to confirm all the assumptions and requirements we have made on this project. And that's, that's all I have, but if you have any question, I'll be more than happy to answer.
What I'd like to do, if I could, just very briefly, is I think it would be useful for some of the members in the audience, if we could also, Anad, go through some of the renderings that you have, and while I just highlight on a very, very big 30,000-foot overview some of the things that Anad said and condense it. So we talk about Act II. This site, because of prior usage, is historically contaminated. It needs a significant investment to clean up the property, and that is something that P.T. and his team in tandem with the RDA is committed to doing as part of this development. So before there's any homes that are constructed, we're going to have to meet DEP standards to illustrate that that has occurred, and we're willing to undertake that investment to improve this property. Sometimes when people say condominium, they don't necessarily understand, because a condominium can mean a bunch of different things colloquially. On RN, condominium means you are purchasing this, once these are built, there's going to be units, the same as there would be townhome units, and you would have the opportunity to purchase the unit, so you would have a, it's called a fee simple ownership interest in the units. It wouldn't be managed by an apartment complex company or anything like that. You would own the parameters of the unit. The only difference being, unlike a single-family detached dwelling, there's no rear yard, but that's why as part of this development, Anad was talking about the underlying performance standards in the RN district, highlighting the fact that we are well below impervious surface and building coverages and things like that. And what that allows us to do is keep a significant amount of green space on this property to provide some sort of community area as well as part of this development, so that we can provide some amenity for some of the homeowners who would live here in the future. We also are totally convinced, and I hit on it, and I'll just underscore this at the end, that I know over the years, there have been a number of different proposals that at least have been informally floated for this property, and they've, there's been a wide range of them, some of them have been non-residential. We think that a residential development, as long as it's done correctly, and as you can see with the renderings, we think we can deliver something that looks really, really nice in the borough. We think that this is the perfect fit for this site. We think any other use that could be proposed here, anything that's more commercial or industrial, is not a great fit for this location, but for the reasons that P.T. said, with a lot of the industrial development that's happening in our region, there is absolutely a demand for this sort of development here, and we think that we can do that development, and because of the underlying performance standards in this district, we can do it in a way that still allows for green space and other features. So at the end of the day, if this is built and it's approved by the borough, we are going to end up with a product that, yes, will have a multifamily component, that multifamily will be in the form of condominiums, there will be townhomes, there will be green space. We're committed to a partnership with the borough to bring about some improvements. We're going to work with the borough and the county on the parking lot that we referenced. We think at the end of the day, we're excited that this could be a new state-of-the-art residential development in this community. So with that, I'm happy to walk through any of the pictures, or we can answer any questions or take any feedback that you all had before we move forward hopefully to the next step in the process.
I know these are renderings, but is that the facade you have picked out, kind of, sort of? It's not going to deviate too much?
Not going to deviate too much. This is very attractive. This is what we'd like. Once we get through the architecturals, we'll kind of, you know, fidget things here and there, but for the most part, this is what it's going to look like.
Okay.
I'd like to ask about, have you done some traffic studies? That's a lot of buildings and peoples and cars under, already very, Pennsylvania Avenue's already packed. And so I think that would be something that the residents would be concerned that are there now.
Yes, so we know that the borough recently did a small little traffic study, but we are hiring, we actually had a discussion today to hire a traffic planning design company to come in, do a traffic study. Once we get to the next step, which is hopefully, you know, the next meeting, we'll have more information and have the first task of that study to get done, and during that first task is actually them reaching out, doing traffic, a little bit of traffic counts, but going to P.A. DOT and coming up with some regulations and a plan moving forward. So it's a part of our list to get done. Yes.
I had asked if they could put a stop light or a stop sign in the middle of Pennsylvania Avenue, right past where their entrance is, but I was told probably never going to happen.
A good way, which we might be working with the traffic planning company, about slowing traffic, is creating parking on Pennsylvania Ave. There's sometimes ways that you could put cars that actually kind of, I don't want to say pork chop, but it cuts down on speeding cars that are around the area. So it's something that we could be looking at.
It's on our agenda. There's no parking right across by the cemetery, so it's on our agenda to vote to remove that.
Oh, okay. There we go.
So that's a plus for you.
That's a plus for the development, and no stop sign.
As a developer, you would have a say in what goes into the HOA bylaws, and I know Jeff mentioned that we're looking for these to be owner-occupied. Is there a particular percentage that you're requesting in the bylaws?
As far as right now, no, but that's something that we can come up with. That's something we can definitely work with the borough on as well. I come up with a happy medium that works for both sides.
So you are looking to possibly allow for a certain percentage to be rentable or tenant-occupied?
No, 100% of our, it's all for sale.
100%. Okay. And 0% would be for tenant occupation and/or someone other than the owner occupying? and/or someone other than the owner occupying?
I mean, that's all in the HOA bylaws. So for us, we're selling this in the HOA, we can discuss through, it would have to be in their laws that they can't lease or sublease out a unit. But I know a lot of condo, two bedrooms, sometimes they, you know, two people come in and, you know, buy one unit and they rent a room to another. So, you know, that stuff we'll have to look out in the future, but that's a little far down the line.
I'd like to ask about the remediation costs. About, will this be grant money? And if it's not grant money, will the, will the cost be added to the price of the units?
Hold on, I got a little bit of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I said, I'd like to talk about the cost of the remediation. How much is it going to be? And is it grant money or is, are the costs going to be added to the price of the units?
So the cleanup phase is totally separate. So there is grant money involved to this. A lot of money comes out of our pocket to start with, to get this project going. And then we do get reimbursed at the end of the day, a part of the cleanup. But at the end of the day, the pricing of the homes is what the pricing of them is going to be. The cleanup phase is not, does not reflect that.
What do you see as the price of the homes?
That's to be determined. They're probably going to be maybe fours and fives, probably around that area. We just don't know for sure.
Thank you.
Thanks.
From my understanding, the parking lot, the senior center parking lot to the north of the property here, there was never an environmental study. When would you guys expect to do that?
So we actually had that planned. So the environmental study actually starts on the 23rd, so next week that goes through. We'll know more about what's in that parking lot and we're happy to work with the borough and also Bucks County on that.
Thank you.
Thanks.
If I could piggyback on the parking, I saw on the plans, it looks like essentially two spots per unit, give or take, looks like, it's like double the amount of units.
You are correct, you are correct, that's correctly noted, yes.
So is anything identified for visitors and that sort of thing? I'm only worried about that in the sense that, you know, as folks come back here, that they're, they're going to have family, that sort of thing. Where are they parking?
We, we are providing more than two parking spaces. We are providing about 20 more spaces than required, which is to 2.2 or 2.3 parking ratio. But you are correct, there is a guest parking which is assigned on the streets. There are street parking.
On the street, okay.
There is a street parking.
So the parking lot near the multifamily unit, the idea there is that's for the, for those units? And then each of the townhouses has like a driveway, that sort of thing? So what's on the street would be available for visitors?
You're correct.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions? So the multifamily, is that going to be rental or is that going to be owned?
So everything on the properties will be for sale, so everything will be owner-occupied.
Okay.
Yes, and both sides will be 55 and older, as Mike stated before.
Okay, all right. Do you want to go through any more of the slides for the public?
Sure.
So that they could get a feel for what this development will look like?
He's pulling that up. So the open space that we have over here, I know we're doing remediation, so we do need to go and cap it off. So those trees will probably most likely come down. Is that going to be like new trees put in there? Are we going to keep it all green space?
So the one back part of the property is most likely to be untouched, so that's still going to stay heavily wooded.
Okay.
We're going to do a little bit of cleanup, but we have a whole landscaping plan in our heads. Again, this isn't designed yet, but we're really early on in phases, but we're going to have a really attractive landscaping plan that comes in off the street and then throughout the whole neighborhood. Thanks.
Real quick, I know it's really early in the process, but if you guys could choose, when would you want to start working on this?
So it's a loaded question because the first phase is actually doing the cleanup. And the cleanup could take anywhere from six to 10 months. We're in the process of getting our permit for that and the permit's being, you know, it's slowly moving forward. Once we get that, then we're going to move through the process. After that process of the cleanup's done, we're looking to get right into construction phases if everything gets approved through the borough.
Thank you.
Thanks.
How long would it take to build after you got the cleanup done?
That's also, we're unsure. It's usually could be a two-year to three-year-long project. That's what it seems like. Housing developments with townhomes and condos usually take from, start to finish, from getting approved to, to finish.
Counsel, anybody have like any objections to any of the plans? Do you have, do you like what the houses are going to look like? Do you like the layout? I know this was just sprung on us, but anything off the top of your head that you don't like?
Well, they're very attractive. It's just a lot of them and that's my concern, is just a lot of traffic on two-lane streets and not enough parking. You know, that's a big concern of mine.
And, and the traffic component is, we know it's absolutely critical and that's why before we even made a submission, we've engaged with TPD. In terms of the performance standards with the underlying zoning district, we actually have only about three-quarters of what the RN district envisions for this parcel in terms of its density per acre. And from a parking standpoint, we know that parking is always at a premium, especially in a borough. We have 78 units that we're proposing and 172 spaces. That's stuff that we can of course continue to navigate with Kurt and his team as part of the approval process, but I did want to highlight the fact that we are exceeding the requirements for parking while being fairly significantly as a percentage below what the density would otherwise permit on a site like this. And I would say also from an architectural design standpoint, unlike the site plan when we come back eventually in front of you with the site plan that we're hopefully going to get approved, the architectural piece of this is, as PT mentioned, is fairly fungible. Meaning, we're not here tonight asking counsel to say, this is the architectural design we absolutely believe that you need to have. That's something that we could certainly be engaged in ongoing dialogue as we go back through the process. We're going to have to go to the planning commission, we're going to have to go in front of counsel at least one more time. So we're not here asking, you have to pick one of these layouts. It's just whatever feedback, initial feedback you have, that would be helpful, but you're certainly entitled and we would welcome continued feedback on the architectural layout as we go through the next handful of months moving forward. Thank you.
Nobody else have any feedback? No? Okay, you got off easy.
Thank you again for your time this evening, we really appreciate it. Thank you.
Anybody from the public have any feedback?
I just have a question. I'm Kathy Panzit, I was on, hi, I'm Kathy Panzit, I was on council. When they even started taking over and removed the slum apartments on the front of Pennsylvania Avenue, was also not aware of all the issues with the DEP and them not closing their landfill. I'll be honest with you guys, I am the one that sat up there in the chair and said, I ain't putting grandma on the radon field, okay? But there's remediation, there's different areas. I, I'm going to say, for you even to come forward with a plan like this in that area and then take off that amount, I really commend you for even coming and trying to do anything on that. I do have every, the plans for my 10 years, I still have what they wanted down there. Label and share. Your structure looks nice for people. I do have a question. In your plan, do you plan on doing a senior center for the Morrisville community in any of your building? I just want to, there was a rumor that, you know, they're coming in. And my other question is, when you take out on the first one and you go back up towards the playground now, is that a street into the parking lot? On your very first one? And thank you.
I appreciate the, the questions. So we'll answer the second one first, which is the lot. So that lot is not a part of our development. Most likely it will be an emergency route for firefighters or police officers to get through just in case into the neighborhood. To answer the first question, what was?
Senior.
Senior, okay, sorry, community room. So in the larger.
Community room, a new, a new senior center.
So we're not going to be doing a senior center? We will be doing a small community room for the community in the, the building itself. Yeah.
So I got a text, so the multifamily, it's 15,416 square feet, 32 units, which ends up being about 481 square feet, so that's what each unit would be?
Yeah, there's.
Oh, that's a footprint.
Yeah.
Okay. I hope whoever's watching at home understands. I'm just reading a text I got. Yeah, so it'll be three times that figure, 1,500 square feet.
Yep.
Okay, that's bigger than my house. Okay. Anybody else from the public? It's more of a feedback kind of thing, not questions, but I'll allow it. I know, but I, I'm asking for feedback, but I said I'll allow it.
Just a quick question. It's my understanding that the.
Name, name for your record, please?
Debbie Colgan, West Hendrickson Avenue. The area that's coming, the, where the Manor Park Playground is and the parking lot that is now showing as part of this parcel, is my understanding, and I think even Scott in the borough gave me information showing that that property would revert back to the borough. So my question is, is are you hanging on to that property? Or, and are you using that, that additional property to determine your impervious surface?
I missed the last part of your question, Debbie, because you weren't in the mic.
The, the parking, the area from the parking lot and Manor Park Playground and you like the hockey rink thing there?
Right, but the last.
That portion was supposed to be reverted back to the borough and they're utilizing that area, it looks like, as determining their whole property. So my question is, is are they using the entire plot as it is plotted out right now? Are they using that to determine their impervious surface?
Thank you. It's a very good question and it is based on definition, the cross, the impervious area is based on the cross track area. As you can see, there is a large 45 parking spaces area is part of that, that red area. So that parking for the Manor Park or next to Manor Park is also calculated in over 34% of impervious area. So it's not just we are counting grass spaces, but also impervious is counted towards, against us as well. So to calculate the 34%, the entire area, 13.6 acres is counted as a lot area. Does that make sense?
Yeah, and are you hanging on to that, please? Those ones at the top, are you hanging on to those or are those split off and revert back?
That, that's a good question, we can answer.
The agreement that the RDA had.
Yeah, and we, we will certainly work with the borough on that.
Yeah, it's, it's still the same way, you know, the borough views it the, still the same way, obviously.
But it is being used to determine impervious surface for the entire project, right?
Correct.
Yes.
That's, that's, yeah, that's what's required under the ordinances. But yeah, the idea as part of the project is, the land development, this will be subdivided off as has been always contemplated, yep.
We can do that, sure.
Okay, anybody with feedback, not questions, feedback? Okay, all right, thank you gentlemen. Okay, so again, once again, misinformation to the residents. Virginia, who makes the final decisions for, in the borough? Is the council, does the council president direct the staff? Do you want to?
No, I'm just saying.
Speak up.
As borough manager. You gotta gather, because I already had that we have to use the mic.
Okay, can you come to the mic? So the first question was, who, who makes the final decisions in the borough?
The borough manager, in this case, of course, Mr. Dillon.
And does the council president direct staff?
Anything that we have given to us or, or do or signed is through Mr. Dillon always.
Okay, thank you so very much. I hope that puts to rest some things. Counsel? So in your packets, there was a, we, Mr. Dillon received an email from Blue Cross Blue Shield and there were some pictures in your packet. They were asking if they're willing to give us $150,000. I mean, it's a little more complicated, but basically, and we would have $150,000 match and it's up to 150 depending on what we decide to do. But I, I know you saw some of the pictures, so it would be probably down at Williamson Park and it would be a little workout area. There were two options, one was very limited, like having just Pilates classes, yoga classes. The other one was more of like lifting weights and doing other things. So is this something you would want us to pursue or you don't like it and we should just move on? Go ahead, Mary.
Overall, it looks great, but I feel exercise or anything like that is an individual choice. You don't have to leave your home and you can exercise. So would it be nice for the community? Yeah, will everyone participate? That's a hit or miss. So if it's money taken from us, I believe it would be a waste of money.
Okay. I think it would depend on where we could locate it because the park isn't all that big. And so it'd be interesting to see, because we're looking at tennis courts and, and that kind of thing, where we could put something like that. We did have some exercise equipment down there, but it's kind of over by, I think the, not Little League, but T-ball area, isn't there? So I have to go back and look, but these look like they're pretty big. So I question where we could even have the room to, to have something like that. So it, it's worth taking a look at and do some measuring and figure out what, and talk with the people. Thank you.
Ellen? I like the idea. I think it's the type of thing that bring, that makes Morrisville more attractive to, to people moving in and it brings us up on the level of the, of the surrounding communities.
I think it's a great idea as well. You know, additions to the park, something everybody wants to see and I think it'd be a positive addition for sure.
Scott? Yes, no, do you want us to pursue it? I have to do by consensus.
Take a look at it, I mean, it's like the.
I'm not, we're not saying that we're going to be, it's a yes if we're committing money. I just don't know if you want us to, do you like the thought of it? And should we contact the people and have conversations?
Yeah, why not?
Melissa?
Ditto Scott.
And Dennis?
I like the idea, it looks, I think it looks good. I think the rendering for the yoga, the yoga section would look great. I mean, the, I agree, maybe the exercise station might be a bit much, but I don't know. I think it would, I do think they would look great in the park.
Okay.
And I like it.
Okay, great, okay, so we have a consensus for yes. Again, well, as, as conversations happen, you'll get more information. The engineering report, we have Kurt Schroeder here with us today. Ms. Jacob?
I'm Ms. Jacob, Phil.
Oh, big news, I'm going to say it. Or, you know what, Counsel, does anybody want to read this? Melissa, you want to read it? It's on the agenda. It's big news. Levy accreditation.
There is a, I'm looking for him, like I just saw it. Sometimes I just can't see through my glasses, I don't know. Look at this, engineer report, 6H, levy accreditation. FEMA, anybody here from the island accepts? Woo! The levy certification will show the Morrisville levy as reducing the hazard from the base flood on the firm, FIRN, for more. for Morrisville Borough, PA, MMA pump station to the--
No, 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 that's it, that's the end.
That's the end? All right. Oh, what happened there?
What happened to that letter?
Okay.
So that's great news.
The important word was accepts.
That's correct. Go ahead, Kurt.
Yeah, that is very exciting news. I think it was talking about, you know, first projects in the borough. This is one of the first projects that we embarked on. I think it was maybe around 2017 was when we first started applying for grant funds toward gaining accreditation. If people don't recall, you know, when Katrina happened, which I believe is the 20th anniversary of Katrina, FEMA went around after those levies broke and they removed accreditations for all the levies, like the one here in Morrisville, which removed it from the flood maps, meaning that the flood maps show that it's not even there. Even though we know it's there, we know it stops floodwaters. But they questioned, well, will it stop the floodwaters during those severe floods? So we had to go through a pretty in-depth undertaking that involved a lot of survey work, geotechnical work, hydraulic and hydrologic studies. And it took a very long time. A lot of it was we would submit something and we'd literally wait, you know, nine months to a year to get feedback from that and then have to, you know, go back in with additional data. But we're finally here after, you know, getting at least two different grant funds. We're actually on a third grant because this is a accreditation that basically says the levy is tall enough, it's strong enough, it's maintained well enough that it regained accreditation. And it's going to take the flood mapping now and it's going to reduce it very significantly. Not entirely, though. There's still a few homes behind that levy that will still remain in the mapped FEMA floodplain. If there's 101 homes, I believe, was around the number of properties behind levy. I don't have the exact number, but I'd say 90% of them are being removed from the floodplain. Now, we didn't stop there, though. The reason why there's still such a floodplain behind levy is from the canal. So if you recall, we're, we've been working on, we're waiting for this initial accreditation, but we're already working on future projects. And we have grant funding to help fund those future projects to provide a spillway north of the Calhoun Street Bridge to allow floodwaters to spill back into the river instead of coming down through the canal and dumping in to behind the levy, which is what that source of water is now. So we haven't seen the map updated yet. We know what it'll look like. But when you go onto the FEMA website and you look up flood maps, you'll soon see them make this major change. And what it does is if you own a property that's currently mapped in the floodplain and you get removed from the floodplain, if you have a mortgage on your home and you're in the floodplain, you're required to carry flood insurance, you don't have to do that if you're removed from the floodplain. So that's a big economic boost for the residents. And it's a big economic boost then for the borough.
Are we issuing residents' letters? Or like, how does that work?
We could do that. I don't believe it's part of what FEMA does. We can confirm with FEMA whether or not--
So residents should just call their insurance company and say, we're FEMA accredited?
They should. If I owned a home there, I would be checking the FEMA's mapping and seeing that it gets updated and then immediately contacting either the insurance company or the mortgage company or both to try to get that removed. You can still buy flood insurance. I mean, you know, this just protects from the 100-year flood event. You know, if you still have a significant storm or you still are concerned about having flood insurance, you still can voluntarily buy it and maybe it's a good idea. But you don't have to, as part of the NFIP, National Flood Insurance Program, you don't have to buy it, which is what the insurance, which is required by the mortgage companies presently.
So the-- Go ahead. Go ahead.
The homes that are still affected, is that more upriver? Or do you know about where? Because, I mean, the levy only goes from bridge to bridge, so--
Yeah, I don't have the actual addresses, but I can, I can try to describe it where that is. There's, it's really tricky. But Park Ave and Central Ave, it kind of like loops around. There are a few homes at the, at the end where Park and Century loop. There's a few homes in that corner, few properties that are still low enough that's still in that, what'll be updated in that floodplain.
And that's because of the accreditation of the levy has nothing to do with the runoff from the canal?
So the accreditation of levy proves that the levies meets the standards to protect from 100-year storm. So the levy's strong enough, it's tall enough. The hydraulic and hydrologic study that was done shows that there's water that still comes behind the levy via a wastegate along the canal. And the idea is to work with DCNR that manages the state park of the canal to barrier off that spillway, that wastegate, to prevent that from happening. And in order for it not to flood somewhere else, the idea is to construct another spillway outside of the levy limits to the north of the Calhoun Street Bridge. So as the canal wants to flood, it's going to cascade back out to the river before it comes behind the levy and cascades into that basin area behind the levy.
That'll help those neighbors that are on the ends of the island.
And when that gets constructed, and like I said, we're already beginning the design work on that, it's an undertaking. It'll take some time to work with DCNR and get permits with DEP and PennDOT and other stakeholders. But we already know what that flood map will look like. And it'll almost eliminate all of the flooding in the flood maps behind the levy in its entirety. So that's a very significant improvement, too. That's why we're working toward that. That will get all the ones from Park and Central out of the floodplain. It'll get a lot of the park out of the floodplain, too. Because, you know, we're talking about making improvements in the park. And, you know, you don't want to build new facilities and then have them get inundated with water.
And will that second part help the folks down on the south end?
Only between the Calhoun Street and the Bridge Street Bridge. That's the limits of the levy. So nothing outside of the limits would be affected.
All right, thank you.
So yeah, that was a big update we wanted to make tonight. Very exciting. Let's see, on the engineer's report, too, I wanted to give an update to council. We did have some meetings with the Morrisville Municipal Authority, as I think everyone knows, probably. They're intending on abandoning the wastewater treatment plant that exists now and relocating that down into the US Steel property. And in order to accommodate doing that, they then have to figure out how to get all the flows that come to that location for treatment down to that new treatment plant. So they're proposing a pump station. It's going to collect all that flow and pump it down to the Steel Plant. So we had received a formal application from the municipal authority. We had done a sketch plan review on that pump station. We had a meeting last week. We had some correspondence with them today. But we are working with them to try to come up with the best location for this pump station because it also includes then the ultimate abandonment of the wastewater treatment plant, which means that property becomes available for future use, future redevelopment. So we're mindful as to recommendations on where that pump station is physically located to perhaps accommodate future redevelopment. But we wanted to bring that to everyone's attention now and just mention that they may come in in the next few months to kind of give an update to council also. But we wanted to let you guys know that that is going on. Another thing that's been sort of on our books for a while is we, months ago, were engaged to do some evaluations of potential boat dock facility in the borough. So we started by getting a hydrographic study done, which basically shows all the depths of the waterfront out into the river at low tide. So we did get that completed. We have that in our possession. And we're working on coming up with a report that the borough can use and that future developers or other interests can use as part of, you know, the path forward here with the waterfront, trying to gain better access to the water. Not surprisingly, there's not a lot of depth in the river. We sort of knew that already. At low tide, there's not a lot of depth that would be, you know, for power boats or sailboats or things like that. But there are still opportunities, you know, canoe and kayak launches is something that's very popular. We get inquiries in other riverfront towns for accommodations for that. I know that the emergency responders are looking for a boat launch location. So we're incorporating ideas to accommodate it and just other opportunities. You know, there could be outlooks where you can walk out into the water or fishing piers or things that otherwise could just get people. You know, there's a lot of open space down along the river. So tying it all in and trying to envision things and opportunities that could, that could come from that. So we're working on that report. Another update, we heard a little bit about the Manor Park Senior Center parking lot tonight. That's sort of integral to this cloverleaf development because it's all part of one parcel. But if you recall, you know, the borough owns that land, the county owns the senior center. The parking lot's in just deplorable condition. So proactively, the borough reached out to the county. The county has pledged grant funds to help reconstruct that parking lot. We were engaged to do some geotechnical borings, which I know Jacob gave you an update on. So we did find what we expected to find. You know, it's part of where the landfill was, hence why there's so much settlement that occurred at that parking lot. But we're working with the county to come up with a game plan. We're also working with 3D Valma Authority and the prospective developer who's going through the Act 2 environmental remediation on the entire parcel. So more to come on that. But we're working on a design to try and come up with ultimately a parking lot project that can go out for a public bid and get constructed so we can provide, you know, safe and efficient parking at the senior center. That's much overdue. Another update on the road program. I know, again, I'm sort of probably being repetitive to what you've already heard. But, you know, we undertook a large-scale paving project this year. And I will say, having done this for 20-plus years, taking a project of that size and going into a tight-knit community of a borough like Morrisville, I don't think the project could have gone any better. I mean, it was really an ultimate team effort. You know, we had great direction from borough manager. Public Works was instrumental in cooperating and helping us throughout. The police department was great. You know, if we had issues at 6:00 in the morning, cars parked on the road, you know, they were out there helping our guys, helping the contractor. And fortunately, too, I mean, JDM just did a great job. You know, they do a lot of these road paving programs. And I'll say, we got the A-team out of them this year. So we're very excited about how that went. I hope that it was a positive impact to a lot of residents who were part of this first phase. And again, you know, we're rolling right into next year's program. We're already scoping that out. We're already following up with a lot of the utility companies that we had followed up with previously to kind of get updates from them as to what roads they're planning to do utility work on because we obviously don't want to pave the roads and then have those roads torn up shortly thereafter. So we're trying to be well-coordinated with the utility companies. But we plan to, over the next two months or less, have a narrowed-down recommendation for what next year's road paving program would look like. It'll probably be very similar in size and scale to this past year's. And right now, we're looking at maybe like a four- or five-year program. We wanted to try to do it in three. Helen's giving me the three-finger, three-year, which, which we probably can do. We're getting better feedback from even the MMA, is maybe expediting some of their work now, which will help kind of tighten up that timeframe. But if there are needs to push out extra years, it's likely due to a utility coordination issue. But the goal is, in three years, Helen's still giving me like, you know, this looks like it's going to be three years. We want to have any road that is in need of resurfacing to be resurfaced in that timeframe. So that's another huge positive.
Could you, I know that some residents had asked me about Palmer. They, they thought it was silly that we paved the road without fixing the underneath. Can you just address that?
Fixing it with--
On Palmer, where it really needs to be replaced, the water underneath--
Storm piping?
The storm piping is there?
Yeah.
So we paved it knowing that we're still going to have to go in there, but just to make the roads nicer.
And that's one of the projects that we are pursuing more follow-up work on. So, you know, first off, the roads haven't been paved in decades. And to go out and try to reconstruct the roads or to fix known issues, it's very expensive to do. And you probably wouldn't then be able to afford to pave the roads or resurface the roads. So what we've done in other municipalities and what we would recommend doing here, too, is, you know, we got the roads resurfaced. That took care of a lot of, like, you know, 95% of the areas. Any of the 5% areas that are problem areas, we can circle back on and come up with mitigation measures, full-depth reconstruction or replace piping underneath. It seems a little reverse order, but when you're decades behind the maintenance, you're sort of left without a choice. So what we've been doing in other municipalities that we work in is, if there are known problems, we identify them. If the pavement falls apart in three years, and you say, well, we just paved this road, why did it fall apart? It's probably not the inch and a half of asphalt that we put down that caused it to fall apart. It's probably something underneath it, right? So we'll delineate what that area is. And we'll then, good practice is, you start proactively knocking off those issues so that when you come through and pave again in 15, 20 years, 25 years, those issues have been addressed. So that's the game plan. Am I answering, is that the question?
Yeah, just so the public, we're looking for grants for that area, right?
Yeah, we're in for grants for that area of Palmer.
Right, so instead of spending taxpayer dollars, the grant will take care of fixing the water problem.
Yeah, and to try to fix it as part of a comprehensive road paving program, it's not efficient. You know, we're paying these guys to come in, drop down. They built their train, you know, they mill and then they pave and then they crack seal, they line stripe. You know, to stop them and try to do work in between, you're paying a lot of money and it's less efficient, so the whole costs go up. But yeah, we have known areas. And if there are more known areas, areas will show up in the next few years. We'll target them and make recommendations on how to address that.
And Pennsylvania Avenue. I know the PICO has done a lot of work down there. PennDOT's going to come and do that, but probably not till next spring?
That's what we're hearing, yes.
Okay, just so the public knows. Council, you have any questions of the engineer?
Totally off your subject. I'm curious as to what's going on with the car wash--
Yes.
--of Boulevard.
Project went just silent. We hadn't heard anything about it in a long time, months and months and months. I happened to run into the design engineer at an event. And he said to me that, hey, you know, that car wash project, I just got a call. They're making some tweaks to what the owner wants or what the car wash company wanted done. And it sounds like it's still moving forward. You know, they went on a big delay, a big pause. They could have probably started construction right shortly after borough approved it. And that happens sometimes. But it sounds like, as of like, right, less than two weeks ago, I heard that update that it's starting to move again.
Do we have a definitive date or a close definitive date on the Pennsylvania Avenue Bridge over the canal? If PennDOT's doing that?
So yeah, we're not really involved in it. We're seeing some emails, you know, Mr. Dillon copies us on a lot of emails. And I know that PennDOT moves slow. And the borough's been good at keeping them aware of the urgencies and the issues. You know, Public Works has been doing what they can, even though it's, you know, PennDOT Bridge-- even though it's, you know, PennDOT Bridge. But they tell us that it's in their pipeline and they're, they're trying to get it, get it replaced.
I think they're coming down again in the next couple of weeks, right, to, to look at it again?
Yeah, because it might be deteriorating quicker than their schedules.
Yeah. They said they were here in July. And they said in July, there was, that the bridge was still safe. So if something has happened, they don't know, but they'll be down here. So we'll let everyone know once we hear from them. Anybody else from counsel? All right, thank you, Kurt. Mr. Dillon?
Just a comment that the staff is starting to work on the 2026 budget, hard to believe. But we're starting on it. The chief already gave me his wish list. So we're trying to put that together for counsel in the next couple of months. So that's about it.
I also wanted to, to mention, so last month, we had Adam from the county library come down. And Mr. Dillon and Virginia and myself had a call with Adam. And he wanted to clarify some things. So, so he had said at the last meeting that for every $1 spent, that the community gets $4 back. And that's quite not true. What it is, is for every dollar spent, there's an ROI that we get a $4 ROI, return on investment back, which is a little bit different than $4 back. We asked him about that and he said it was based on a study. And he just sent us the study this morning, Virginia? Yes, which I will share with the library board. But the study was from 2007, 2008? Yeah, so, so, you know, he quoted really outdated numbers. But he also provided us with a study from Texas from 2017. So Texas is a little different than Pennsylvania. But I wanted to clear that up for everyone so that they're aware of that. He also made mention that, um, he had said that $50,000 would be the salary for, for a librarian, a full-time librarian. And he said that it's going to be a little higher. So he had quoted about $75,000. So that's just to clear things up that, that were said at the last meeting. The other thing that happened was we started bringing up about the library and how we could get more aid. And so there is a motion, I don't know which number it is, on the agenda. However, so, so he said the only way we could get more aid is if we went to the county commissioners. And so we discussed the aid and maybe even being part of the Bucks County Library Branch System. So the motion is only to start conversations or have a conversation. So Mr. Dillon would have a conversation with the county commissioners and find out what it would take. And then if there would be aid available to Morrisville to help us support the library. So that's all I have to clear up there. Solicitor report.
Yes, I don't have much, but I want to piggyback off, Marie, the question you asked Kurt there at the end about the car wash. We talked about it a little as well, behind the scenes and knowing that and knowing who is going to be here tonight. Mr. McGinnis also represents the car wash as well. So I shot him a text as we were walking into the meeting, knowing that when I, he knows that when I text them, it's usually something I would need a response to right away. So he said, yeah, there was some behind-the-scenes stuff administratively on their end that they've been working on and working through. But that's all been resolved. And, yeah, they're definitely ready to start pushing forward again. So that's good on that side. A lot of the other stuff I was going to talk about, you know, a lot of stuff with the announcements. We have our big thing being the bid opening for your trash hauling contract, the current contract with, um, Republic Services expires at the end of the year. So that bid opening is at Thursday. So we would expect that for you guys at your October meeting for the, a recommendation for an award to the company. So other than that, I don't have anything else.
Good evening, everyone. I'll be short. I, for one, am also looking forward to the car wash, if it ever gets going, because the place we use now is not too great. And this will be much closer. So I first want to thank Officer Hallis, Corporal Hallis, for standing in my absence last month. I couldn't be here and he was able to take care of. So I hope he was able to deliver a report. And I am happy to announce that as of Friday, our live scan is up and running. So, yeah, it took a long time. It was delivered last week. The gentleman that came to install it, it was his first live scan with this company.
Could you just tell them what live scan is?
Oh, I'm sorry, the live scan. So the live scan is, we are now a booking center in Bucks County, which means that we could fingerprint people right here in the building. Prior to getting our live scan, it's a fingerprint machine. Anytime we arrested somebody, we would have to take them to either Middletown Township or Lower Makefield Township. And we were at the mercy of their officers, their live scan technicians. And typically, it was about 45 minutes to an hour period that our officers were out of town. So now that we have our own, we're doing it right here in-house. We're keeping our officers on the street here in Morrisville. The process is much more efficient. We are the first borough, as far as I know, in Bucks County to have, to be a booking center. So it's a really big deal. It didn't go without a couple of bugs. And there's still some bugs we're working out. But on Friday, we printed our first person. And it was a success. So we're looking forward to doing that as often as possible. In fact, I think that we should probably talk about maybe inviting some other agencies that don't have live scans because there is a fee that we receive for every booking that we, we complete. So I think we certainly accommodate some of the other agencies that don't have it. I also want to thank Sergeant Asfro Monte because he was very instrumental in helping prepare that booking center room with some of his masonry expertise. And we now have an area that we opened the wall and we have what is our booking center. So he was fantastic. Just a reminder, school being back in session, I talked about this the last time I was here. Please be mindful of the kids walking, the increased motor vehicle traffic. We also had a meeting with our crossing guards prior to the school year. And Mr. Dillon gave me last year the protocols that Bristol Borough uses. We implemented those, we handed those out. So there's a little bit of a learning curve with our crossing guards. And to the public, if you see anything that may be of a concern with any of the crossing guards, please forward it to the police department because we address them when, when they arise. Quick announcement, our trunk-or-treat is scheduled for October 23rd, right outside here in the parking lot, from 5:00 PM to 8:00 PM. So bring your trunks and Halloween costumes. Last year, we had a huge event, hoping it's going to be bigger. And last thing I have is, the last time I was up here, we talked briefly about Nixle and GoGov. And if the council would like to hear, I have some limited information. I have some brochures that I could talk about those two products. I had webinars with both companies. And they're very similar, subtle differences. Pricing is similar, but they pretty much do the same thing. I can go a little further.
It's nothing we're going to get today or tomorrow. I would rather counsel have it in their packet so that they could read about it.
Sure.
And then next month, if you could just give your recommendation, which one you like, that would be great.
Sounds great.
Yeah, because then, I mean, your word carries a little more weight.
I appreciate that. That's all I have.
Did you like one more than the other?
Potato, potato?
Okay.
Yeah.
Is this something, is this something we would use?
And, and that is hard to answer because, you know, we use Facebook and we get a lot of information out on Facebook. We're a small community. I don't know how many events or happenings that we have where it would really be worth it. But it's certainly a good, they're both good platforms. They're both multimodal, which means you could do text, phone, social media. And I know I'm getting ahead of myself. It's something we need to discuss based on the pricing and, and our reach of residents.
Yeah, so I don't want to push something if we don't need it. So, so let us know what you think.
I will.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Questions? Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Hey, consent agenda, right? I didn't forget anyone. Okay. Approval of the 7:15 council meeting minutes. Approval of the bill list from 8:01 to 8:31 in the amount of $1,186.97. $974.21. Approval of waiving fees for Morrisville Little League to hold a celebration of life memorial service for Charles Daniel Howard Charlie on Saturday, September 20th at 4:00 PM at Williamson Park Majors Field. Approval of a millage payment in the amount of $75,000 to the Morrisville Fire Department as per the 2025 fire fund budget contingent upon receipt of payment in full for gas and diesel invoices. Approval of a millage payment in the amount of $35,000 to Capitol Health as per the 2025 EMS fund budget contingent upon receipt of payments in full for gas and diesel invoices. Approval for Chloe Radbill to get her Girl Scout Gold Award with a dog supply exchange box at the Morrisville Dog Park, which is similar to the little libraries. Scott, would you make the motion?
So moved.
Luke, would you second?
Second.
Any discussions?
Just a quick question. Just wanted to make sure this is not a typo. It's millage is coming out of millage and not, that's not supposed to be mileage? Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, millage.
Coming out of the millage. Okay. Yep, I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Anything from the public? Anything from the public?
Do you have a comment about this section of a consent?
Do you have a comment? We only do, we only do one. Do you have any, any comments about the consent agenda?
That's what all of them were. I mean, I put mine, Kathy P. and Zeta, I put it on the agenda items. So I'll go right on through. I'm not going to comment on your bill list because there's no copies of the bill list on... But I question, why isn't there copies of that? I just want to make a statement, too. It is always night, it is always a gray area to highlight deaths. Always a chance you might miss somebody. Sadly, you missed one of your own, Wayne Teddimer, who passed away on September 1st. So given his service to our community, especially the fire departments. I'm only going to say this. I thought it was an embarrassment to pick on one employee and bring one person over. You should have had your entire staff if they wanted to talk about stuff.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Against, abstentions. Motion passes eight to zero.
Call for motion to authorize Gilmore and Associates to conduct traffic calming studies for Bridge Street from the borough limits at Althea Avenue to Delmore Avenue for North Pennsylvania Avenue. From Bridge Street to the borough limits at Walnut Lane and for West Philadelphia Avenue from South Pennsylvania Avenue to borough limits near 351 West Philadelphia Avenue for the cost as follows. West Philadelphia Avenue Traffic Calming Study, $9,800. North Pennsylvania Avenue Traffic Calming Study, $11,800. Bridge Street Traffic Calming Study, $12,300.
Luke, would you second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Anything from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Motion passes eight to zero. Marie, would you read the motion?
Call for a motion to approve the application for payment, number four final, for the Manor Park Playground Improvement Project in the amount of $12,756.40 to Premier Builders and Corporation, as recommended by the borough engineer.
Catherine, would you second? Motion and a second, any discussions? Anything from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Motion passes eight to zero. Melissa, would you read the next one?
Call for a motion to acknowledge receipt of the annual Minimum Municipal Obligations Form, MMO, for both the police-uniformed and non-uniformed pension plans to be submitted to the Pennsylvania Municipal Retirement System by October 6th, 2025, and authorize the borough staff to execute the necessary documents.
Andrew, would you second?
Second.
Motion and second, discussion? Anything from the public?
I'm back again. Just because I was going to go through all my sections of this.
Did you just state your name?
It's still Kathy P. and Zeta. And my question is, I'd like to know what those amounts are for each, for uniformed and non-uniformed. It says execute the documents. There's no amounts in there?
Anybody else? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Motion passes eight to zero. Scott, would you read the next motion?
I call for a motion for the approval of awarding the annual 2025-2026 Consortium Salt Bid as bid through the Bucks County Consortium to Morton Salt Incorporated. $61.86 price per ton delivered and $61 price per ton for pickup. Contract to run until September 30th of 2026.
Dennis, would you second?
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Anything from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Motion passes eight to zero. Andrew, would you read the next one?
Call for motion, advertised update to Borough Code Ordinance 435-18. Pardon? Oh, E, okay. Trying to get ahead of myself, okay. Call for motion to request that the Bucks County Commissioners to set the Morrisville Free Library as the eighth branch of the Bucks County Library System to be operated directly by the county.
Melissa, would you second? Scott, would you second?
Second.
Discussion?
I, I second it. You said earlier, this is only discussion. Like, we're, we're talking to the, the commissioners to... So nothing's going to change with this, with this motion?
No, nothing, nothing will happen with the library. It's to open discussions with the commissioners to see if we could get aid or, you know, is it feasible to join the library system? If they say it's feasible, counsel would then have a vote to say, yes, they want to or no, they won't. But, but even just to get the aid, we need to, to start discussions.
Because the way this is worded, it's to accept as the eighth branch. So if the commissioners say, okay, we'll accept you as the eighth branch, and...
Counsel would still need to vote on that.
Okay.
Is there a way that we could just maybe do a motion to update the, the wording that it's a discussion?
Yeah, someone would like to amend the motion, too.
I'd like to amend the motion to include the word that this is a discussion.
To discuss, instead of accept, discuss?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion would be called, I'll second that. Call to a motion to, to request the Bucks County Commissioners to discuss the Morrisville Free Library as the eighth branch of the Bucks County Library System to be operated directly by the county.
Yes. Thank you.
Anything else, discussion, counsel?
I would just like to say, I know there's been a lot of discussion around what happens with the library. And I don't want to preach to the choir. And I don't know who from the public is watching at home. But I just want to say, where libraries are concerned, it's super important that we're using the library. I'm not really sure what's going on. I, myself, don't get too many opportunities to go to our library. But I would say, being married to a librarian, what I know is that libraries...
But I would say, being married to a librarian, what I know is that libraries thrive and have to operate on their stats. If we are not entering the building, there are not stats to support it. If there's something in particular that we want and/or need or think that the library should provide, give the staff that feedback so that they can do it. But if we're just going, it's so great that we have a library, look at it on the hill, I can see it from here, but we're not entering, we're not using it, we can't get upset if there isn't the right resources to support it. So if you want it, go. It doesn't have to just be books. There are other things there. And if the things that you want are not there, tell the staff. Other than that, there's nothing that they can say on our behalf that supports its existence.
Thank you, Melissa.
I'd like to respond to that. Unfortunately, you missed the meeting that our... the President of the Library Board did come up and give some exciting statistics of how much the library is really being used. So maybe you can get ahold of those and kind of see what's happening.
I can tell you, those stats still aren't enough.
Okay. Anything from the public? State your name.
Eileen Grossman Bailey, Palmer Street. And I was a little startled when I saw the... the motion to... to... for the... for the Morrisville Free Library to become the eighth branch of the county library. But I do understand what you're saying, that you just want to discuss additional funding sources with them. So that's not something that's being proposed at the moment. I did send Borough... the Borough Manager and Madam Council President a copy of my remarks. So maybe that could be forwarded to other Borough Council members.
Yeah, I'll look for it, and I'll forward it to everyone. It'll be in your delivery next month.
Because there is a lot of use of the library at this time. So I do hope that we... that we can present in October some recommendations from the Library Board about considering accepting state... continuing to accept state aid. And I also want to say that we want to be able to contribute to the 2026 budget for the library. So thank you very much.
Okay. If you have something, just forward it to Mr. Dillon.
I...
Or have you already did?
No, I haven't.
Oh.
But the... but the library is well under budget for 2025, and I think consistent with the 2025 budget would be appropriate.
Okay. Okay. I'm sure he'll have questions. He can reach out to you, correct? If he needs it.
He certainly can, and he has very kindly.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening. Excuse me, sorry. Peggy Walsh, Stockham Avenue. On the surface, the request to have the Bucks County Library System take over the Morrisville Library sound like... sounds like it's not such a bad idea. However, there are several issues. Morrisville has previously made this request and been denied. In fact, such requests from other libraries like ours have not been successful in the past, none that I'm aware of. We already enjoy the full services of the Bucks County System, cataloging of all new materials they take care of, deliveries of borrowed books three days a week between Bucks County Libraries, the ability to borrow any public... from any public library in the country, and a significant discount on what we purchase because we purchase in bulk through the library system. We already have all that in our current status. What we would give up is ownership and operation of the library, and I don't know what that would mean for our historic building because I don't know how that works. I feel this is a delaying tactic to let our library die from neglect. We have been without a head librarian for a year. Current council has been aware of the permanent vacancy since March and has not posted a job. In the meantime, we allowed a fantastic candidate who could have been both our children's librarian and our regular librarian to slip through our fingers because her request was either ignored or put on the back burner. Since that departure, we've lost another young, vibrant, creative aide to Ben Salem Library. Our library is currently being staffed by a courageous crew of five part-time workers who have valiantly tried to keep our library running. They have never had a meeting with the Borough Manager. Several very qualified current board members whose term is up have applied over and over again to be reappointed and have also been ignored. One source of revenue is the rental of the downstairs meeting room. Staff has had 10 requests in the past month or so, but have been told by the Borough, quote, "not at this time," end of quote, even though this council has urged the library to raise its own funds. I feel, and this is my opinion, that this council wants the budget of the library for other projects that they deem more important. No, you have said that you will not close our library, and that's probably true, but you can also let this treasure die from neglect. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Sean Raddy, East Philadelphia Ave. I'm perplexed by the notion that this town is doing so well financially in recent years from what we're being told and what's reported to us. And with all the new projects and proposals and studies that are being enacted and pursued as of late, and yet somehow we are suddenly unable or unwilling to support one of the oldest cornerstones of our community. And it's a shame that there are people here that think supporting a public service like a library is a financial tax burden, especially once apparent that they clearly aren't using it. These are services that are meant for the show a town is investing in its people, not just itself. It's never been about earning money. There's a lot of good things for people that don't involve having to earn money off of it. But it's about making the community feel supported, supporting resources, supporting continued education, supporting those who do not have the means to get these resources otherwise. It is not applied to all of us, but this isn't about us, the individual. This is about us, the community. The $200,000 budget this town contributes, not to be confused with the misleading claims that has grossly inflated the library expenses once again by over 50% of its costs, has remained relatively the same for years. And this year, that burden has been lessened by the prolonged absence and hiring of a director librarian due to unexpected circumstances, which at the very least will help us to lower that tax cost on this off-year. But with that in mind, this means that this should be our time that we are rebuilding both with staff and with board because we cannot survive in case any of these plans don't go through. There's no reason to continue holding off in these positions regardless of the outcome of this decision. There's no harm in filling these spots now because we don't know if these plans will work or not. Having spoken to several friends of mine associated with the BCFL, I know also of the immense challenge in joining such an organization, especially in our current circumstances. So I wouldn't place all my eggs in those baskets in its entirety, just in case. In the meantime, this discussion should be tabled temporarily or at the very least before final decisions made and allow for the community to come together and weigh in on whether this is the course of action we would like and to lose control of our own library. A staff and board needs to be ready and functioning regardless of the outcome of this to be a success, whether we continue on our own or as a BCFL incorporates us into the fold, and they'll need that manpower. Yet with another confirmed lost board member, the Library Board is going to be unable to hold its meetings in its current standing. So appointing people who are already waiting for months for their renewals has no downside either way, nor does having staff available and working because both sides of it can help us keep the success, whether joining or staying individual. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? All in favor, say aye.
I really can't say if I trust your numbers. And we really have a hard time trusting numbers when nobody balanced books. You had to have two accounting places trying to figure stuff out. I heard ridiculous amounts that were charged to the library fund. Quite possibly, it could have been an accounting issue, which is called the due-to-do-from-fund balance. Maybe that was an issue even that started. So now all of a sudden, the community is like, this is the biggest drain that Morrisville ever had. And I do believe that some people say, everybody has a right for what they want. Maybe, I don't want exercise, I ain't going to go do trails in exercise. I don't have kids, maybe I don't want a playground. But then I'm also a person who, yes, I do want playgrounds. I expect a little mixture of all, and now you do have other ways of looking at it. But the biggest concern for me is, I don't know if we can trust any number. And to me, the dollar versus the $4 return on investment, I don't even know how they define that, but I truly believe it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions. Motion passes eight to zero. Dennis, the next motion?
Call for motion to advertise update to Borough Code Ordinance 435-18, eliminate parking restrictions on the west side of Pennsylvania Avenue between Anderson and Brooks Avenues.
Luke, would you second?
Second.
Motion and a second. Discussion? Anything from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Opposed? Motion passes eight to zero. Marie?
Yes, G. Call for... call for a motion to authorize Gilmore and Associates and Corporation to proceed with preparing and submitting applications to the PA Department of Community and Economic Development, which is D-C-E-D. Local Share Account, L-S-A, grant programs for the following projects. Patriots Park Improvements, Trenton Avenue and Plaza Boulevard Traffic Signal Replacement, Hillcrest Avenue Stormwater Improvements, West Palmer Street Stormwater Improvements, Public Works Street Sweeper Vehicle Purchase, Fire Department Rescue Vehicle Purchase, Public Works Facility Acquisition and Improvements, Borough Truckway Scale Redlocation Project.
Catherine, second. Motion and second. Discussion? Anything from the public? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion passes eight to zero.
Madam President, if I can interrupt the proceedings for a second. I just... I know that there's a time for council member comments, but if I could just make an announcement really quick?
Sure.
So due to some personal things going on, I will be resigning my seat in October. I'll be sending a formal letter to the Borough Manager and to Council President in October. But I wanted to make that announcement now.
Well, I'll be sad to see you go. You're a tremendous asset to the council.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Well, we'll comment at the... Yeah. Okay. This is for non-agenda items. I don't... somebody crossed things off, so I'm not quite sure who's talking where, but Kathy Panzita?
Kathy Panzita, 401 Hillcrest Avenue. Thank you, Melissa. Dear Council, please accept this letter of interest for any current or future second ward council vacancies from today until December 31st, 2026. I would never want the second ward to not have full representation on any Borough Council business or meetings. I have previously served second ward for 10 years, so I know the commitment to be prepared for every meeting. I have attached a little write-up also. I look forward to hearing from you should the need present itself in the future. This time, I'll hand-deliver the original to the Borough Manager, and I made a copy for each one of you.
Thank you. Peggy Walsh? Peggy Walsh?
I'm sorry, no. I didn't know when I could comment, so I already commented. Thank you.
Ali Harmon?
I just wanted to answer.
Eileen Grossman Bailey? She's gone. Sean Raddy?
Sorry, I realized. Excuse me. I'm going to take a second. Sorry.
That's okay. Gary Matthews? Hello, Gary.
Hi. Good evening. My name is Gary Matthews. I live on Eagle Road in Upper Makefield Township. I'm a semi-retired contractor and a real estate investor. In regards to the rental inspection programs, I recently had 18 units checked in Morrisville, and I had a total of three violations. They were all very minor. One thing was a pressure relief valve on a heater in a basement that the tenants aren't allowed in. I had an intermittent problem with a ground fault receptacle, and I had a tenant break a light globe over top of a vanity. I fixed all these items within 24 hours, and, you know, that was it. But by the way, in close to 50 years of doing rentals in Morrisville, this is my first time I ever had any failures. And Larry is a very thorough inspector and a good guy. Anyhow, I'm not... I'm not against these inspections, but I firmly believe that they don't need to be done every year. You know, it's... once some of these items are corrected, they're not going to go bad the next year. Anyhow, I think landlords should be maybe put on a grading system, and if you have a certain percentage, maybe you need to have this done every year. If you're one of the better landlords, maybe you could go every two or three years or whatever, you know? I think that that's something that maybe you guys can figure out. I would like you to. Anyhow, I'd rather put my time and money into... great... into, you know, working and keeping the properties in shape rather than waste a lot of time, you know, lining up the tenants to get, you know, the land inspectors in and out of the building. Like I say, I'm always... I'm all about safety. It's a very important thing to me, but I sort of self-inspect my properties. So I'd like to make a proposal to all the council members, the Borough Manager, and the Mayor. As Borough Leaders, I would like to offer you all a free safety inspection on your properties, okay? On your personal residences. And it must be the same inspection that I have on my properties, okay? I'm willing to pay for all of that. And the only thing that the catch is, that you would have to reveal any failures that you would have at the next council meeting. I got you guys smiling now. Anyhow, I would hope that we could have Larry Bill, the CEO from Barry ISIS, do these. I've dealt with a lot of inspectors over my 50 years in this business, and Larry's one of the best. He's very thorough and consistent, and he takes his job seriously, and I think Barry ISIS and Morrisville Borough should be very proud to have him.
Oh, thank you for saying that.
Last but not least, if you want to sign up for this offer tonight, I'll stay here for 15 minutes. I want to see your smiling faces to this meeting. You're making me laugh. So you can do this if you wish. I'll go to the Borough Hall first thing tomorrow morning and pay for things, you know, for this. And like I say, I'm all about safety for everyone. And remember, you must reveal any items that you have any failures at the next council meeting. And if anyone wants to sign up, I wish you good luck with your inspections, and thank you for giving me the time to speak.
Thank you. Lee Taylor?
Tonight, the Morrisville Landlord Tended Coalition would like to present a revision to the UNO code. A revision was suggested by your own inspector, Larry, at a previous meeting. This suggested revision will address some of the issues mentioned, such as lack of UNOs of property sales and between occupational changes... occupancy changes. The identity of the new occupant will then be turned into the borough within 30 days, as Ordinance 1019 also requires. Since the new occupant's information is still turned into the borough, it can be determined if a UNO was not secured in the future if the current occupant's names do not match that on the original UNO certificate of approval. The second main area addresses the concern that long-term tenant occupied properties are not inspected frequently enough. Most tenants turn over every three to five years, and HUD tenant properties are inspected annually by HUD. The current annual tenant rental inspection code fails in a number of instances, in that one, it is discriminatory against a certain class of residents, tenants; two, it requires inspections by a borough officer, thus violating the right to privacy promised by the Fourth Amendment of the Constitution; and third, it sets up a monopoly for a single company endorsed by the borough. This revision, in addition to the UNO, solves all these problems, but especially the last two, which are mostly... which are most troublesome.
That's three minutes.
Speaker? Thank you.
Can I ask a question? One question, real quick. Mr. Taylor?
Who's speaking?
I am. Over here. In your real estate that you own in surrounding municipalities and townships and whatnot, are there... Do they do things differently than we're doing, or are we pretty uniform?
Yes, well, actually, my next speaker will mention that, because none of the communities around here... I own properties in a number of these communities, and with all of our landlords, we own properties, and Bristol and Morrisville are the only two that require rental inspections once it's occupied. None of the others do. There are some that get their money by having a license fee, that you have to pay a license fee, but there's no inspections involved. So Bristol's every two years, and Morrisville's now every year, but none of the others, and we'll list them in the next presentation, nobody around here does that, not even Philadelphia.
New Hope does it. Warrington doesn't. There's...
Everybody does have inspections. I mean, I...
Excuse me? What, excuse me?
Portion does it, and Philly's going to be doing it.
Philly does not do it now. What were we saying, Dennis?
I was saying that, again, and I want to clarify, you did send me an email, so I believe I said at the last meeting, and I was confused by what you were saying, but there is a license ordinance in almost all of the townships, boroughs, and you're correct, not all of them do inspections. So I think the confusion, and I hope you don't take this the wrong way, I think you're muddying the waters with UNO and license inspections, UNOs for when a property transfers. Title company is not responsible to enforce that UNO. That's going to be up to the buyer, the seller, if they want to move forward, and you're right, then a hold harmless comes into play.
My revision requires the title agent or the real estate agent to be responsible. That's how we correct that problem.
Right, but your revision should go to code and talk to Barry about that, and then, I guess, then that would come back to council.
You're right, they're two different things. You're correct. So UNO, everybody does, and we all do between when it's not occupied. Once it's occupied, a number of these, not all of them, but a number of these around, do require a license, which you pay $100 for, whatever, and you tell them, "I have a license," and they send you... They say, "Thank you for the money," and they send you a license. But Helen mentioned a few around here, but you notice, New Hope, Warrington, other ones around here, all the ones adjacent to us, none of them, except for Bristol, require a reinspection along with that. And I think that's because they recognize that inspection violates the privacy rights...
I don't think it goes that far.
We're not going to go back and forth.
But it... We're just rolling this out, so that's why I think we're requiring the inspections. At least, that's my understanding of it, so I hope that helps.
Someone have a question? Not?
Jim Gaffigan?
Jim Gaffigan, Cox Avenue. This section has an updated certificate of occupancy required. It allows the borough to require a landlord to update their certificate of occupancy by having the property inspected by a qualified inspector of their choice, using the borough's criteria. This is how all electrical and chimney inspections are currently handled, with the landlord selecting the qualified inspector of their choice. This updated certificate can be requested every five years after the date of the original UNO inspection, following the current period of rental inspections for Boston and Allentown, Pennsylvania. Philadelphia requires no rental inspections, except in the case of a tenant complaint, and none of our surrounding municipalities require any inspections once a rental home is occupied as a private residence, not Yardley, not Lower Makefield Township, not Falls Township, not Bristol Township, not Tullytown, not Ben Salem Township, and not Trivos. Only Bristol every two years, and now Morrisville requires inspections of occupied non-owner residences. Under this revision, HUD properties will be exempt, since they are already inspected annually. This section solves the last two issues by eliminating the borough from establishing a monopoly with a single company, and having the landlord self-inspect his longer-term tenants by a qualified inspector of his choice, rather than an officer employed by a government agency, the borough, which violates the Fourth Amendment's policy, cause protection for all citizens, not just homeowners. Unfortunately, this still does not satisfy the claim of class discrimination. It ignores code inspections for homeowners who have not been inspected for far longer than any tenant, thus meaning the homeowners are the most at risk for safety, fire, emergency, and code violations. Last year, a Morrisville homeowner's home burned to the ground. Its safety is really a concern. Perhaps the self-inspection requirement of an updated certificate of occupancy should also be required for all homeowners every five to 10 years, or at least encouraged as a discounted optional service of the borough. Tenants, of course, may always have any time request, any time, they can request a borough inspection if they feel the residence is not being maintained properly. Lastly, the $1,000 daily fine per unit has been adjusted to an initial fine of $1,000 with a 30-day reinspection. This fine will apply to all landlords, and in the case of a transfer of title, real estate and/or title agents, if no U and O was obtained at the time of this title transfer. A copy of this revision is now being distributed to you. If you have any questions or need clarifications or anything, feel free to ask. Thank you for the opportunity to present a solution to the havoc that has been created in our borough, and we are only sorry that you would not give us the time to present this properly as requested at the beginning of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Ray, mayor comments? Oh, but let me ask one more thing. Anybody else have any comments? No? Sean?
I put on the twice, I'm going to do it a second time. Sorry, I thought I put myself on the twice after...
Yeah, I was very...
I know, it was confusing to me, so I apologize for that.
Yeah, that's okay.
So I find it... Oh, sorry. Sean Rady, East Philadelphia. I find it a bit troubling that a council can have the power to create a program such as this residential ordinance, have the power to resurrect it after sitting years dormant, and have the power to create and enforce such... Sorry, create and enforce such a troublesome program the way we have, but yet seems helpless to find any way to take credit for the turmoil it has created for local renters and for the landlords, as well as being unable to make the alterations needed to provide and improve the process to make it successful for all parties involved in a meaningful way. Now, I would be opposed if these landlords were coming up here and just demanding that this stuff be taken down or stopped entirely, or even if they wanted to rescind any previous safety inspections we have, as some people have said or implied here publicly before. But from listening to them after all this time and these months, that's not the impression that I get from any of this. They said they'd come to ask for a fair balance to restored... to be restored, and a fair semblance that is made that applies to all homes, not just a targeted group, whether intentional or not, something that balances and benefits the safety of homeowners and renters alike, and even the business operations that these landlords are bringing to the borough. I was at the housing crisis meeting that happened here last week, and one of the biggest complaints that they talked about here in these discussions was the challenge that small towns had over supporting and working with landlords who are coming in either to provide low-income housing available for residents or to upkeep the properties that are available. They said, "In a time like this, township should always find a way to hold on to these landlords and developers who are willing to invest in our homes and draw in new members of the community. We, as a borough, should be trying to lead this in example, working together instead of what keeps feeling like an opposition." I would hope that this enactment isn't solely about earning money for the borough side either, because that would be in bad faith. I, for one, would feel better reassured if we were able to at least amend this ordinance and place a cap on the amount than any future borough can place on these inspection fees. That would help to reassure residents and landlords that this will never turn into a financial burden on them, because this is really about safety, so keeping that cap from ever going out of control by any group down the line. I see no reason why the cost for inspector walk-through these homes with the same checklist should be any different now as it will be 10 years from now or 20 years from now to do the same thing. These gentlemen and others have been here month after month in offering a solution and a compromise, not an attack, not an insult, and not with any intent to cause disrespect. It does not feel that the optics of this program or the messaging it's given is doing the same in return. Perhaps it's time we return to a policy meetings and again have all of us on each of these different sides come together to face this issue as united group, looking to... I'm sorry, looking out for each other and for our citizens, creating a real solution for a problem that helps and benefits everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor comments?
Good evening, Morrisville. All right, so yesterday was the kickoff of Morrisville's first annual sip and eat. So what an exciting time here in Morrisville. I was able to kick it off yesterday at Bella Sisley. What a great meal company. Just love Bella Sisley over there. Gabriella, who helped organize this, so a special shout-out to her. Thank you. This does go on until Sunday, 9/21, so get out and see and taste what Morrisville has to offer. And now I also want to say, Melissa, we appreciate you. We will miss you dearly. Thank you for what you did for Morrisville, and I wish you all the best. You're welcome. Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Mayor? Wow, look at you. Okay, council member comments? Go ahead.
Speaking to our community and anyone watching, because this is your town, this is my idea to have a suggestion box. I heard there used to be one years ago here in Borough Hall. I ask that everyone be respectful and, you know, keep it to what you want your needs met about. However, just please make a blanket statement, yes or no, like I'm asking for a poll. So just if you get in touch with the council, our overall emails, and just let us know, yes or no, and then the majority will win. So this is just, I'm asking for a vote on how you feel about a suggestion box. I have like two and a half years left, and I know some needs are met more than others, and maybe you need to be heard in that way. And then again, no one has to know, no one has to sign anything. You just put down what you want or what you're requesting, and that's all. Thank you.
Anyone else? I have a comment. So, thank you. A couple of things I wanted to say. We'll miss you, Melissa. Good luck in your future. I'm sure it'll be great, so, and exciting. So, thank you for your service. I also wanted to mention a few things about the senior center, just to let people know. We are going to be having a flu shot clinic on the 24th that starts at 10:00. But if you want breakfast, you can come at 9:00, and it's $5 if you're a member, and $7 if you're not, and it'll be a great breakfast, and then you can get your shot. So just to let people know about that. And we will be having a Parks and Recreation meeting the end of this, the fourth Tuesday of this month, and it'll probably be our last one for the season. So thank you for all those continuing volunteers who've come out and supported this committee, and we've done a lot of work in it, so thank you so much. And that's about it. Thank you. Thank you, Catherine. Anyone else? Melissa, I just want to say thank you. Thank you for raising your hand and volunteering to run. It's not an easy decision. It's not easy to be here, but, you know, your dedication is really appreciated. So I too wish you well in whatever you're doing, and it's been nice having you.
Thank you. I'm really sorry to go. I really appreciate those who came out to vote for me. I'm sorry to let you down this way. I did not anticipate this at all, and it did not come easy, this decision, but the time is right. So, thank you. And I really did enjoy serving my neighbors, as I tend to call you all when you come up here to talk, right? So I just encourage you all to remember, we are neighbors. We are neighbors, and to think of one another that way. We don't have to always agree, but we could do a better job than so many others, right? We could talk to one another with respect, and remember, we have opinions, and we can just try to work through those differences. So, thank you.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay, if that's it, meeting is adjourned.